Well, it's just a little past six o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and have a motion to come out of closed session first.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion when we return to open session.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. Hearing done, I'll start to vote with Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Phillip McCraw.
Yes.
Yes. Now, we need a certification that we only spoke in closed session about those items that we originally identified, and that was A1 personnel, A7, and A8 legal. And so, I'll read the certification resolution. Whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convened a closed session this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. If you agree with that, I'll ask you to please so certify to that. I'll start with Mr. Hill.
So certify.
Mr. Phillip McCraw.
I say certify.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
I say certify.
Mr. Moore.
I say certify.
Mr. Webb.
I so certify.
I so certify. Now, I ask Mr. Robbie McCraw if he will lead us in our invocation and our pledge.
It's all right. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've provided for us. We thank you for this group that have gathered together. O, we ask that you watch over each of us. Take us home in our appointed times, Lord, and keep us safe in our travels. O, we ask that you be with us as we conduct this business and just watch over us and protect us. Be with those that are sick, shut in, and, Lord, especially be with the lost. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and it's good to see a good crowd with us tonight. I'm gonna make a slight modification in the agenda on the new business B. We have the Dixie League, and I'm gonna move that up now ahead of citizens' time because we have some young folks out in the hall that would like to come in and be recognized, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Moore if you do that.
All right. Come on up here, ladies. Don't be bashful. If y'all can keep me out till 1:30 in the morning, we can come up in here. Good to see y'all again. Yeah. Y'all come up here and line up, and we might get a picture took. I see a newspaper there. Who wants to get some out and get their picture took? But I will give a slight introduction. This is our nine-and-ten Dixie League Angels team for Carroll County. They won the state last week, and they'll be going on to South Carolina to represent Carroll County in the World Series. So, the first... They're the first softball team we've had to advance to the World Series, so... You hopefully see them around town. They go July the 23rd to, what is it, Larry? What's the... Mucks? Mucks Corner, South Carolina, near Charleston. And you'll probably see them around doing some fundraising and stuff, and they'll go in and support them, help pay for their quest to hopefully represent Carroll County and have a lot of fun. And at this time, I'm gonna get you, young ladies, to help me make a presentation. Larry? We've been out Dixie softball for about five years and baseball, and Larry, he contacted me back in the winter and asked if I would help, you know, come onboard with the Dixie Board and represent Carroll County and get them back in Dixie. And Larry's the director of our program, and, you know, a lot of kids... We've got two teams actually in Lynchburg today, and the boys, you know, still competing. And so, from the Carroll County Board of Supervisors, we'd like to honor you with this for your support and helping all you two down this year for Dixie to get back in after five years. Thank you for everything.
It's not about me. It's not about anybody. It's about these people right here, and that's why I stay involved. I love kids. I did it for thirty-some years, so, for some reason, I got back in. It was good to get back in and see the success these young ladies had last week. I know they're excited. We're excited for them, and, like I said, we just thank them a lot. Thank the board. Appreciate it.
Congratulations and best of luck at the World Series.
Thanks for everything, Larry. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
Good to see y'all again.
Hi, girls.
Good to see ya.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, if it's okay...
Sure, totally.
Mr. Watson sent us an email a while ago asking us to consider donating $1,500 to these girls for their trip. I'd like for us to go ahead and take action on that while they're here, if we can.
Would you like to make that...
And I'll make that into the form of a motion that will donate... I think Mr. Watson said we need to donate the money to the Dixie youth, and then they can send it on over to them to use in their trip.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any discussion? I'm not gonna ask you to vote.
I abstain, yeah. I abstain, yeah. I'm on that board.
Mr. Moore?
I abstain.
I was just kidding, actually.
Yeah, no, I was prepared for that anyway.
Mr. Robbie McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Phillip McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, and ladies, I'd like to ask you one favor. Bring us back a World Series, okay? You can do it. Bring us back a World Series.
Now, you won't have to walk down there.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations again. Y'all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Well, that's our good news for today. And we appreciate Mr. Moore being, hitting that up and getting everything going again. We'll get back to our agenda now, which is citizens' time, and I want to remind everybody that if you have spoken about a subject in the past in recent times, we ask you to not do that again unless you have some new information for us, and you do have three minutes, which we will... Make sure that's what you have, but no more than that, and the lights should be on podium when your three minutes is up. We have a pretty long list here, and I'll start with the first, Sue Edwards, if you'd come up, please. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the supervisors that supported us today for going to Galax. I understand that was a good meeting. But what I want to speak to is the fact that we live near, and this center is near, 7758. A lot of people travel through this area. We've got the truck stops are full, the restaurants are full. The motels, if this happens, are gonna have to provide some kind of service to the people that come through 'cause we don't want them to leave with a bad taste in their mouth if they get broken into, or, you know, if they stay a few days. There's just a lot that can go on, so I think we need to think about that. If somebody don't, you know, do that, then the county will have to. You can't let it go on 'cause we do want to leave a good impression on our people who travel through Carroll County 'cause it brings in a lot of money. And this thing goes from mouth to mouth. When they leave, if they've had a bad experience, you think they're gonna come back to here again? And go to our restaurants and go to the gun show and the Labor Day and Moral Day? We've got all that coming up every year. Bad publicity could shut it all down. And I live close enough to... And I'm a widow, and I live close enough. I don't have a gun, and I don't wanna get a gun. But I do wanna feel safe. So, I've asked you to do what you can, and I appreciate what you are doing and have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Surratt.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us, and thank you for doing what you can, and I hope you do all that you can because we're afraid. I'm afraid to say that. I'm in my nineties. My husband's in my nineties, and we've lived here 51 years and never had a bit of problem anywhere. I live in the circle right above the training center, and we have never had any kind of disturbance from them or the neighbors. We are all one big family, and that's the way we would like to stay. I had hoped, I had heard that the Amish had tried to get parts of it, and evidently they wanted too much money for it, and then they turned around and sold it to that multimillion-dollar company for less than half what they offered. And people in Carroll County haven't been given one bit of notice of any kind that anything was going in there, and that's not right. We are family. We need to know what's going on, and it's our homes, and we wanna feel safe in them, and we want the neighborhoods to be safe. I don't... I know people that have a drug problem need help, and I'm not against that at all. But a multimillion-dollar company could buy anywhere in Carroll County where there is acres and acres of vacant land and put up what they wanted to exactly instead of having to redo little things that are down there because that is not made for what they want. And we heard today from people that had worked both places and that things are not run like they're supposed to be run, either in Galax or with this company, and that leaves a bad taste in my mouth. I'm afraid for our families. There's five ladies that live in my circle that have no husbands, and if they walk up that little hill, they're right at my back door, and their back doors. Something has to be done, and I appreciate anything that you all can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Honeycutter is our next. Welcome.
For letting me speak. I attended the meeting this afternoon, and it was conducted by Corey Rife, who's the project review analyst from the Virginia Department of Health. And, of course, she was there just to conduct the hearing. First thing I want to talk about is the fact that I was really happy to see four members of our board attending the meeting, and I thank the three who spoke this afternoon and for their support of our effort to try to keep our entire community safe, not just my small community, but our entire community safe, and to guarantee that the tax-paying citizens of Carroll County are not abused because their money's going to provide services to a multimillion-dollar company, providing services to residents all over the state who come there for treatment. Today, I learned that a contract had been signed between the state of Virginia and Arcadia and that the report that this, that would be written from today's hearing and the review that they're doing, and this hearing was part of that review, actually is gonna happen September 7th. So, it's as though they're at the end of what they need to do, and this hearing today was because the law required that they have this hearing. And I think they should have started much earlier and notified this area, the county, the Board of Supervisors that this was gonna happen. My feeling is that if the Carroll County Board of Supervisors gave this parcel of property to the state for the training center, which benefited this community, that certainly the board, if you haven't already asked them to return that parcel to the county, you should be doing so. So, that's what I hope will happen. I'm trying not to readdress things I already talked about before when I was here last month. Another problem I had with the way the, or where the meeting occurred today was the fact that it was in the city of Galax, and it is a contiguous jurisdiction to this one, but it happened to be in Galax on the Grayson County side of Galax. And the gentleman from Arcadia mentioned that their project that they want to do is supported by Israel O'Quinn. He does not represent one person in Carroll County. Not one person in Carroll County can vote for him or not vote for him because he represents Grayson and over to the west. No mention was made of our representatives, our two members of House of Delegates, or our state senator. So, I objected to that. So, I just wanted this to be on record in the Board of Supervisors meeting so that we can have all this documented as to what happened today at the meeting because they have their documentation, and I felt we should have ours. But I ask you to, as I did last month, please keep us safe and also ask for our property back. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I believe the next speaker, if I'm reading correctly, is Bill Bowers. Is that correct?
Welcome.
Dr. Littler. Philip. Rick. I know you, but I don't, I can't remember your name.
Tracy.
Yes, Tracy. Dr. Littler, thank you for being there today. Looks like it's gonna happen, whether we have any say-so in it or not. We weren't given a choice. It's their way or no way. So, what can we do to make it safe? I don't have the answer. I don't know what to do. What Carolyn just said just made me just put my head down like now. Everything was in vain. And what she said was right. They didn't come to this county. They're going around the back way to get the things done they want done. So, you know what to do. I don't know what to do. You're all smarter than me. Philip, you and me talked today, and I enjoyed it. Last time, Joe talked about this, I just wanna say thank you. I mean, there's nothing I can give information-wise, and I guess my quest of this is over, but... My mom's sake, my sake, I live at Romison Drive, right there, one road down. I'm worried. I'm afraid. My mom's wanting to buy a pistol to protect herself, and I'm like, no. She used to be a good shot. She probably is better than I am. So, just keep your ears open, and whatever you can do to counteract what's happening, do what you can, and I just wanna say thank you.
Rick Alger.
Welcome.
Evening. Well, I spoke today at Galax, as some of you gentlemen heard. It actually cost me my job to do so. I was terminated at 4:30 this afternoon. I will say the Life Center is wholly unprepared to deal with the issue of substance abuse. They have, their security protocols are outdated, and it's most definitely going to affect the community. I live here in Hillsville. I don't want to see the community go through what I know Galax is going through from firsthand knowledge of working in that facility. There are more drugs in that facility and probably on the street, and they're easily accessible. The security director is a former counselor. He has no security experience whatsoever. The assistant security director has an HVAC diploma, and that gave him his title as assistant security director. Again, no security experience. None of the gentlemen that are employed... None of the gentlemen that are employed as security guards are DCJS certified, which is state regulated to be a security officer. None of those gentlemen have been, some of them have worked there for years. After ninety days, you're supposed to not be able to be a security officer in Virginia. I was a security officer here in Virginia for two years, nineteen years total of being a professional security officer. I will, I will say now that this is going to go through, that they have a tremendous task to protect, to protect this community and they can't do it. So I don't know what you gentlemen are able to do to ensure that that happens, but I hope that you can do something because the, it's a monster that's coming into your backyards and into my backyard. It, it is, there is always comments that it's going to increase crime, it's going to bring drugs. Now, we all know drugs are already here in our community, unfortunately. Crime will be a result if Arcadia is allowed to continue to practice the way that they are. If they were to have stopped, contract their current population and bring it to a successful program, that would be different, but they don't care. Half the time you have sixty-two patients in Galax that are on their own for twelve plus hours a night. The idleness leads to relapse and it leads to old, bad behavior. We've had TikTok videos of them giving out prison tattoos in our, in our houses. This, this is a complete failure on the management level and that's why I spoke today when I did. And even though it cost me my job, sometimes doing the right thing is hard and there are risks involved with it. With that, that's all I have to say. Hopefully something can be done by you gentlemen to, to protect the community because we do have something bad coming and it's not speculation. I've seen it and I've, I've been around for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next speaker is Greg Alger.
All right. I'm just going to say, first time coming to a board meeting since I was in scouts. First time I've ever made this, these kinds of speeches or whatever. So I know of a lot of the citizens around there are scared to death. When the training center first opened, they had a few people get out and about in the neighborhood. And I remember my mom and dad telling me they got scared because they had people going through the yards. It wasn't a lot. But what's all this going to bring to their community? My mom just thought, we just lost my dad a couple of months ago. My mom is already scared and terrified to death. This is really scaring her. There's a couple of other widows right through that neighborhood. They are scared to death. Not only that, they've raised their families there. Why should they have to be scared now? They, my mom and dad lived there for forty-six years. Nice quiet neighborhood. Now this, we, they're scared. I'm scared for them. But whatever y'all can do to enhance security or ask for security, that, that might go a long ways. Do we need places for people to rehab from drugs and alcohol? Yes. Does it need be right there on the edge of Hillsville? Me personally, I don't think so. Property owners down, up and down that way, what's it going to do to their property values? They're scared about that too. I don't know. I'm, I'm throwing out more questions for y'all. What's it going to do to our property values? What's it going to make you do to feel safe? And if they feel, if they think this facility is going to be so safe, why don't they put the facility and the people that runs this place, put it in their front yards, put it in their backyards? Maybe, I get a little passionate sometimes, okay? But if they really think it's that safe, why don't they live across from it? I really am scared for my mom and my sister over there. But do I think they should have to move because somebody needs drug rehab or something? My mom's lived there forty-six years already. Why should I have to ask her to uproot her life? To move somewhere else safe? What's going to move in there somewhere else to scare her? This is a nice, safe community, I think. But are they going to have any security guards? Are they going to put up any fences? A lot of people are asking these questions. And from everything I've ever heard, the answer, probably not. And from that gentleman's statements about their qualifications, doesn't sound like they got a lot of qual, qualifications. So.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Sally Marshall.
Welcome.
Evening. I just want to thank supervisors for going to Galax today to speak out. I appreciate that. That means a lot. And I know how important rehab is because I have a son that's an alcoholic. But it don't need to be in a residential area. And I am very concerned about my safety as well as the other people in the area. Please, y'all do what you can to help us out. I don't want to leave my neighborhood. I don't want to be forced out of anything. Just do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darrell Vaughn.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I really appreciate you all coming out and supporting us up at Galax this, this evening. One thing that really bothered me was the sheer arrogance of the guy from Arcadia. We're NIMBYs. You know, he stated several times in his speech, the people of Carroll County meant nothing to him. And that, that's pretty much the, the way the company sees us. We mean nothing to him. You know, the people of Carroll County, and that's the way they have approached us. They went through the back door to buy the property without our knowledge, without the supervisor's knowledge. That's total disrespect to each and every one of us in this community and we're the ones that's going to have to support it. I've lived here all my life. I own a business here. I bought and sold property. And my property backs up to the training center property. So I think the people of Carroll County deserve better than this. This company is no good for this, for our county and nowhere close to the interstate where drugs are that, that accessible. Because drug dealers, that, that's where they come and buy and sell. These people, they come in, they're at their own recognizance. They sign themselves in, they sign themselves out. People only change because they want to change. These, these people, they, they basically go in there to keep them in jail. So I think we can put a stop to this. And it's in your all's hands now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a Vaughn?
You pass. I could plug it. Francis Boatman. You may want to pull that mic down just a little bit.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you. My name is Francis and I own property in Carroll County and I have family here that live close to the training center. I was very pleased today to see you gentlemen come out to the public hearing. And I hope you understand, it does not sit well with me, the attitude and the approach that that company is giving Carroll County. It was very much upset me today to see those Arcadia Health people ignore you and your questions as supervisors, as citizens. It was like what you had to say didn't make any difference to them at all. They didn't care. In Carroll County, neighbors and businesses need to be respectful to each other. And I don't think that company has any respect for you as a board or for any of the citizens. They are only looking at the profit that they're going to make. Now, I've been following this since December. I watch your supervisors' meetings on the YouTube. Thank you for putting that out. But this deal has not been handled correctly from the beginning by the state. It is now on your shoulders to hear your citizens cry for help, to let Arcadia and the state of Virginia understand that you don't come into Carroll County and treat people like they are beneath you, like they did today. They need to answer your questions. They need to answer the citizens' questions and the state of Virginia needs to be held accountable. We pay taxes whether we live in Carroll County or whether we live in the state capital of Richmond and we are just as good, if not better than they are. So please pass something this evening that addresses the anger and the frustration that I feel and I'm sure you feel from being dismissed today by Arcadia Health. Please protect the citizens of Carroll County. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Boatman. Welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. Y'all have been seeing and hearing from me since November. Trying to bring y'all some new information this evening. Today at the certificate of need hearing, that tells you that this deal is not done with the state. The deed is not signed, it's not recorded. They cannot move forward unless the contingency of them receiving that certificate of need is approved. We have time to act. You have time to act. They can say it's done, but the paperwork's not signed. That's how we know they had a hearing today. CEO of Arcadia Health called us the NIMBYs, not in my backyard. He, he referred to it like if it was going to be a sewer plant or a power plant. You don't want that in your backyard either. There's a reason. There's a reason you don't put sewer plants and power plants and drug rehab facilities of this size in the middle of a residential area. They don't belong there because of the problems they will cause. He touted his doctor, Doctor Encarnacion, about what a great doctor she was and over the medical facility. But he forgot to tell you how many countless, countless times her license as a doctor has been restricted or revoked for not writing her pain prescriptions correctly. That's not really someone to brag on. He touted the Carroll County Department of Social Services letter from Teresa Eisen. He was awful proud that they had a letter from somebody in Carroll County saying that this was a great facility to come here. I don't know if that's a conflict of interest, but I feel like it is. How did she write a letter for her husband's company stating enough facts for the citizens of Carroll? Another issue is, I am asking y'all to request an investigation into the sale of this property. This property is not sold, yet the state has already produced legal documents from Virginia Department of Transportation as of February twenty-sixth, saying if the property had been sold, it hadn't been listed on their website thirty days at that point. You can't say it's sold if it's not sold. I ask for y'all to request that the county attorney file an injunction on behalf of y'all on the handling of this property and also the very important facts that nineteen seventy-one Board of Supervisors purchased that land, three parcels. In nineteen seventy-eight, parcel was asked, since it was no longer in use, it was reverted back to Carroll County citizens. In nineteen eighty-five, a second parcel, which was no longer used by the state, reverted back to Carroll County citizens. I asked and, and I can see from tonight earlier, you can make a motion. You can vote on it now. Ask for the injunction immediately for at least a hundred and eighty days. Ask the state in a formal letter, not just a discussion, but in a formal way, give that land back or we're willing to fight for it. If two out of three parcels have come back, the third parcel should be an easy get. Thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you. That is all the citizens who have signed up. Is there anyone else like to speak while we still have citizens' time? All right, well, thank you all for speaking and giving us your opinion. And I know it's hard for you probably to believe it, but we are working on this. It's, we got the information very late in the game and our attorney's been taking notes and doing some research for us and hopefully we'll have some information soon. Our next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Does anybody have any questions about any of those or could we have a motion to accept them? Can we make a motion to accept the payment of invoices? Give it a second.
Second.
Any discussion on approving the payment of invoices? Hearing none, I'll start the voting with Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ma, uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Yes. The motion's approved to pay the invoices. The minutes from our last meeting is our next item. We need to approve those or amend them if necessary.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? A second. Any discussion on the approval of minutes from last meeting? Hearing none, I'll start the voting with Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Yes. The minutes have been approved for the last meeting. Under new business, we have the consent, consent calendar. That does not approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? I'll start the voting with Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Yes. The consent calendar has been approved by unanimous vote. Our next item is the MOU on the Cana brush truck. You want to speak to that?
In your package, it's got a memorandum of understanding. This would be between the Cana, Cana Volunteer Fire Department Carroll County. What we've been doing in the last several months is putting together a document that we've used on other occasions in order to clarify what the truck will be used for, the ownership of it and that the county will be titling it and ensuring the vehicle. It's exactly, pretty much like the last one we did. I'd request that the board approves this so that we can move forward.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Watson. That memorandum of understanding does need to be approved if you so desire.
Make a motion to approve the MOU for the Cana brush truck.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item is a workforce development nomination and we have been asked, requested to approve the nomination of Brad Rodriguez to serve on that board as our business representative.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, we approve that individual for the workforce development nomination.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Watson, do you want to discuss the Woodlawn memorandum?
Okay, in the past, with the Woodlawn School, the property was owned by the EDA. It was transferred over to a developer that's putting housing in there. There's been several discussions in the past requesting, as an incentive, they would reimburse after it's been paid the first year years of taxes. Going back and looking for a document, we couldn't find where we had a signed document. So, we brought it back in order for it to be approved. We want to cross our Ts and dot our Is. After reading this, there is one thing that I'd like to see us maybe change. The board's requesting approval for all permit fees. I'd rather get into procedure where they pay them, and then we reimburse, the EDA could pay them, and we can reimburse the EDA. That way, we just don't waive fees. Currently, the only fees that I'm aware that we waive are schools, and I think churches don't pay a permit fee.
So, rather than waive, we'll reimburse, is that what you're saying?
Yes, reimburse, and then the three-year taxes after it's been paid.
Essentially, the EDA would make that as a grant that would be reimbursed then by the Board of Supervisors to the EDA.
We don't have a MOU with the EDA.
And we can write up an MOU if necessary. It's probably a good idea to go ahead and do an MOU so we actually get into the process of doing these, so it lays it out a little better.
I'd make a motion to table this request until next month.
That's fine.
Till we get that done.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on tabling this until next meeting? Hearing none, I'll start the voting with Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Yes. This will be tabled until next meeting with probably an addition of an MOU to go with it. Our next item under new business is the broadband study contract. Again, would you or our attorney like to speak to that?
Absolutely. The broadband study contract, I'm gonna say within the last two months, we advertised to have professional services. One of the things that we wanted to do is, when we applied for our last state grant to receive broadband funds, our application was weak due to the lack of information. So, we were recommended to move forward with some design. What this professional service will have them to go out and drill down on who has broadband services within the county. Also, we tweaked it so that it would cover... The American Recovery Plan requires that it have to be at a certain level. This was included in this. We did bid it out, we received proposals, we graded them, and this was a recommendation to move forward with. There's also one little change that probably needs to be done. I'd request this to be approved contingent on the county attorney's approval.
Thank you. Yeah, there's just a... There's one provision I'd like to go back to the vendor to discuss, and that's the limitation of liability provision. I think that there's a compromise that I would like to propose on that limitation angle.
Tighten it up just a little bit, right?
Yes, sir.
We've been asked to approve or deny this contract. What is the intention of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve it contingent of the county lawyer.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll start the voting with Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item is a work session that we have been requested to set for next Monday, July 19th at 5:30 for the discussion of a CIP and planning purposes, financial management policies, and I'm not sure what ARPA stands for.
That's the American Recovery Plan Act. And what that is, is the second round of funding that is supposed to help with recovery of the Corona epidemic of last year. What the goal is here is to look at our capital improvement plan, also find the purposes of what the additional funding that we receive can be used for, and also set some financial guidelines such as financial responsibility and debt reserve. Well, I'm gonna call it debt ceilings, but it's just a work session to go through for planning purposes of the next several years.
If it'd given me five minutes, I probably could've come up with that, but I put the second, I couldn't think what it was.
I get it wrong all the time.
What is your pleasure, gentlemen? Would you like to set a work session for our items we just discussed?
For the 19th?
Next Monday at 5:30, unless you want to make some changes to that. That's the suggestion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll start the voting with Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Yes. And the motion passes unanimously. I have two agendas in front of me, and one has an item that's on one and one is not on the other, and that's the Treasurers DMV appropriation. Is that something we're supposed to do?
Yes. Yes, we need to go ahead and appropriate the money that was designated at the end of the budget. There's the funds that were received from the DMV fees were placed. I'm gonna say that the board agreed to move that money over to the Treasurers Department and have her with the flexibility in order to distribute those funds.
That was a total of $10,936.35.
There was actually a little more, but that's all we had asked to appropriate at this time. I think the norm number is around $13,000 and some change, but I can bring back a final number later. This is the amount they're requesting now.
$10,936?
Yes, sir.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I make a motion, we approve the appropriation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll start the voting with Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously for that appropriation. That's all the new business I have listed. Does anybody have something else?
Dr. Littrell, I'm not sure if it's most appropriate in new business or if the board members would like to consider it some other point of the agenda, but I would at some point ask for a motion to authorize me to direct the county's opioid litigation council to vote Carroll County's assent agreement to the proposed Purdue Pharma bankruptcy settlement agreement.
If you don't mind, could you give just a little background to those who are in the audience? They might not know exactly what you're talking about.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. I believe it's approximately two years ago, the county was approached about the concept of seeking legal action against the manufacturers and distributors and other responsible parties for their role in pushing opiates in an irresponsible manner that has led to the nationwide opiate crisis that's hit especially hard in southwest Virginia and including Carroll County. The Board of Supervisors at that time retained Wagstaff Anacart Mel, a firm out of Missouri in cooperation with a couple of local Virginia firms to represent the county in litigation, seeking compensation against those responsible parties, including Purdue Pharma, who is one of the largest players in the opioid crisis. Not long thereafter, Purdue Pharma and the Sacklers, the family who owns Purdue Pharma, Purdue declared bankruptcy, and the claims have been proceeding in the bankruptcy court. We're now at a point where a proposed settlement agreement is on the table for a vote. If a sufficient number of plaintiffs vote in favor of the settlement, then it's likely the bankruptcy court will approve the proposed settlement, and that will provide for payments in excess of $5 billion to the various parties' plaintiff. And there is a formula for dividing the settlement proceeds amongst the various parties. We've discussed the proposed allocation, and at this time, our opioid litigation council firms, they've advised us that it is their recommendation that we accept the terms of the proposed settlement. So, that's what I'd be asking for this evening. The deadline to approve that is Wednesday. So, it's not something we have much time to delay on to get our vote in. I will say that this is just the Purdue litigation. This does not resolve any pending claims or future claims that might be brought against other responsible parties for their role in causing the opioid crisis.
And would you further explain what these funds might be used for if we were to get them?
For the bankruptcy proceedings, the bankruptcy judge has specifically ordered that all proceeds are to be used for mitigation, opioid abatement. So, things like drug treatment, drug prevention, first responders responding to opioids. Those sorts of expenses would be payable from the funds that Carroll County would receive.
Thank you. I just thought it was important, since we've been talking about drug problems, that the folks might like to know what we were talking about.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your explanation. We've been asked to approve our... The word is escaping me, but anyway, grouping in with all the other folks to possibly get some funds back for the opioid crisis. You want to stay in motion better than I did?
Yes, I'd be looking for a motion to direct the county attorney to authorize the county's opioid litigation council to cast Carroll County's vote in favor of the proposed settlement in the Purdue bankruptcy.
That's exactly what I was trying to say. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We have legal counsel to vote affirmative in that lawsuit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the voting with Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Counsel. Is there any other new business? We have a couple of old business, pardon my voice. A couple of old business. One is a local natural disaster letter, which we're asking for approval of that. And that goes to the Office of the Secretary of Agriculture and Forestry. It has to do with the fruit loss due to freezing temperatures on April 2nd, 3rd, and 4th of this year.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the letter.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? The letter notes that our county observed a 95% to 100% total tree fruit loss for the county during that freeze. And it's about $2 million in losses that would have been sold in our county this year. Hearing no other discussion, we'll start the voting with Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Yes. So, we will send that letter out tomorrow. My computer is not cooperating in our next item is committee appointments, and I cannot open that up. This is just one.
Yeah.
Okay, you have in front of you a request to be appointed to the Economic Development Authority of the EDA by Gregory Hawks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Greg as to be appointed to the EDA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think so, yeah.
Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote on the appointment of Greg Hawks. Pardon me. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Robbie McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Philip McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Is there any other old business I'm not aware of? That means we're down to supervisors' time, and I'm gonna start with the far end, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everybody that came out tonight and spoke. I did not get to attend the meeting in Galax today, and I'm sorry. I do want everyone that spoke to understand that I hear you. I don't want this thing in my backyard either, okay? But I do want you to understand that this board, every single one of us, are trying as hard as we can to get those safety features, to get that fence, to get better security. Our hands are tied up here. I mean, I know I heard you say that we can do it, we can propose it, we can do this. We talked to legal counsel tonight in closed session about this thing, and the information that came back to us is we can pass every, any kind of resolution you want to, but the state's gonna overrule everything we do, or we feel they will. Because this board begged the state of Virginia for that facility when it first became empty. We wanted to put a foster care facility over there. And we were told, no, they're gonna sell it. And short of, I don't know what else to do. Short of doing what they're doing on the pipeline down in Roanoke County, go sit in a tree. I don't know, you know? And I know you're frustrated. I know each and every person that lives over there is very, very frustrated. And if something does come up, please believe me that this board is not just going, we're done with it. We're not. We're gonna try to the very end to do anything that we possibly can to help the citizens of this county. I promise you that. I am. These other guys, I feel like are gonna do the same thing. And so is our legal counsel, and so is our county administrator. We're trying. We hear you. It's just, we're between that rock and a hard spot where we don't have the authority to say, you can't do it if, unless you. We don't have that authority. And we can sit up here and pass every resolution telling them that you've gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta do this, but we don't have the authority to enforce it. And I apologize for that. But again, I hear you, and I feel for you, and I'm gonna continue to work with it with our legal counsel, our county administrator, and the other members of this board, and see what we can do to get this thing, if it does come, that it is safe for the citizens of this county. I promise you that. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Philip McCraw.
Thank you. Thank all of y'all for bringing your concerns to us, listening to them. And like I told them over there today... I've listened to them and like I told them over there today, it wouldn't be in my backyard, but I'm still concerned about it for y'all. And I was very shocked that they sent somebody out from the agenda department of health that could not answer a question, you know? I was really shocked. I asked her, I said, who do we talk to about the sale of this? I don't know. I can't tell you. Does she not know anything about the department she works for? Why did she come? Why did they send her? I don't know. But every question is asked. She couldn't touch them. So I don't know what the purpose of the meeting was for. The one that spoke, he was representing the outfit to be a good neighbor, but I think the good neighbor policy was for money they can drag in out of the pockets in the county. And like you, I don't feel like he's going to be a good neighbor. And I hope there's something that we can do that'll be of help to you. I don't know. But I'm willing to do anything I can to try to help you. Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Yeah, I've got several things. I'd like to, our counsel has filed a FOIA request. I'd also ask you to send a letter to the Office of State Inspector General to look into how this was conducted, how it originated, any details that we can find out from them. And that would probably, in itself, would, if they looked into it and found something, I guess they would automatically do that. Would that be your concurrence?
I believe so. If there was something inappropriate, they would have their own independent duties to look into it. But to follow up on your point earlier, Mr. Hill, I did submit a FOIA request. The response I got back was that the land sale of the training center property has not been finalized, therefore the contract is not subject to FOIA at this time because it's still being negotiated. That's the response I got back. I can tell you I intend to file the same FOIA request every week to see when it is signed. I want that, I want that document once it is, once it's signed. So I'll continue to follow up on that.
All right, I appreciate it. And maybe something would transfer. I'm sure they can get documents that we can't, Inspector General's office, can they? If it's a sale of state property, my impression was that I always had to have the, the General Assembly had to approve it either through the budget document or through an act of the General Assembly and then sign by the governor.
And there has been action from the General Assembly to sell that property with the provision included in it that it must be used as a healthcare facility for five years after sale. So that part has been conducted by the General Assembly.
Okay. And the next thing I'd like to make a motion that we pass a resolution, request the sale, I mean, request that that land come back to Carroll County. And should we, who should we direct that to? The governor and the General Assembly, our delegates? How would that be appropriate? At least our delegates, I'm sure.
It would make sense to me to send it to, to direct it to whoever and everyone we can imagine. So the governor, the General Assembly, our specific representatives in the General Assembly. I can think on that if there's other parties we should direct that to. Looks like we're going to have a work session next week. So I could have a resolution for your consideration at the work session for adoption.
Yes, that would, that would work. Other than that, I was not happy when I went to that meeting today either, you know, not in my backyard. That's typically however, everything's addressed, not in my backyard. If you've got the money, it's not in your backyard. And I hate to say that, but that's the kind of way it is. You know, when they tried to put windmills up in the Atlantic Ocean in Massachusetts, money said, no, somewhere else. So, you know, it's tough that we have to deal with this sort of thing. And I understand people's concern. You know, it should be, they should have ample security. They should have some type of fence. We just released the, turned the road in front of there, back over to whoever gets the land. It was VDOT that maintained it. So that's no longer, we have no control over that. And, you know, it's just, it's just sad that that's the best we can do. Also, Thursday night, the planning commission, our last meeting, we directed the planning commission to look at ways of what, specifically it's about zoning, how you can zone to deal with things like this. We have a lot of other things that come into effect that could affect Carroll County. So the planning commission will be having a meeting Thursday night to discuss that if y'all are interested. And I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and earlier today, too.
I've got one question, Mr. Chairman. On his motion, do we have to vote on it?
There wasn't a second.
Oh, yeah. He, I guess we...
He made the motion, but we didn't second or vote.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't, I don't think a motion's necessary. I'll prepare it at the request of one member of the board for your consideration if you can vote on it once you've got it in front of you.
Okay. All right.
I'll just do a draft.
Yeah, that works.
Are you finished? Robbie?
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And I hate that I missed the meeting today, but my public job had me tied up doing other things and I couldn't get free. And I hear you. I'm like Joe, I hear y'all. And I know a lot of you all personally and have known a lot of you for a long time in my life. I mean, there's a lady back here that I felt like had a hand in raising me a part in my life and I appreciate that and I respect these, you folks for this. There's lots of things that we have been discussing and I hope that here in a little bit, the county attorney's going to be able to shed some light on the zoning that we're talking about and where we're staying with it and what our limitations are going to be. I think we've got some that we're going to have some hurdles to overcome because of it. They don't have a good track record of maintaining their security over there evidently. The gentleman spoke a while ago, you know, he explained that and it's eye opening when a former employee speaks those things and says those things. So I just, I want everyone to know that we're trying to do everything that we can and we will do everything that we can. And I appreciate Rex in his direction to the county attorney, those ideas, those are good ideas. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
I'll just ditto what each of the other board members said. It was, I'll say, to my year and a half, it was, it was an honor to be able to stand with you today because I was like Rex. I wasn't planning on speaking, but you know, I felt insulted by Arcadia whenever, in the opening ceremony of his speech and, you know, that's not, don't sit well with people from Carroll County. We, like, we had a group of young ladies here. They showed a lot of fight last week and that's what we love in our county and that's what we're about, you know? And like I said, my heart breaks for you, you know? It's, it's tough. It was tough, you know, that, for all of us, that, you know, this thing got in here like it did without, you know, our representatives and us even knowing it, you know? And I don't know, just the bad taste in your mouth and it's almost like a lot of things that they don't want in Richmond, they'll send it to the Republican Southwest Virginia and there you go have it, you know? Thank you for all for coming out and thank the board for supporting the Dixie Board tonight, you know? Our young ladies, it's been an honor to represent them as the District 6 director this year and hopefully we'll enjoy some good things in the future. I did get a text a while ago, our boys are losing 3 to 1 in the second inning in Lynchburg, but, you know, hey, they're having fun. That's what matters. Thank counsel for all you've worked on, on this, you know? I know you've been spending a lot of time on it and Mike and our employees, they're working hard and seeing a lot of good things and I guess that'd be all.
Thank all of you for your comments tonight and I appreciate the audience so much for coming and expressing your concerns, your concerns or our concerns. Unfortunately, sometimes our hands are tied. Richmond is a tough nut to crack because I did my very best to try to keep the training center open in the first place. I attended two subcommittee meetings. I spoke between, before both of those subcommittee meetings to try to get the training center to remain open. And the senators that you were talking to on the dials would nod their head when you spoke to them and then when they came to vote, they would vote no. And so it's a really hard situation to try to get anything through Richmond for our area for some reason, but it's not for lack of trying and we will continue to try. And I don't know what the outcome will be and I hope it's something that's positive, but we are trying and we appreciate your concerns so very much and I feel for you. It's not exactly in my backyard, but it's in my county and so we're certainly trying. And those are kind of hollow words, but that's the best I can give you right now. With that, I want to let Aaron Adonister have a few words.
Well, I just have one little issue to go along. I just wanted to make you aware, the AS400 is the hardware that we use in order to support our financial software. There's some issues with it. There's some performance issues. We're not exactly sure what it is. However, we will be looking in the future. It's not something we want to do right now. Hopefully in the next two, three years or so, we're going to look at new financial software, which is going to take some time. So we're going to have to repair this hardware. Not sure if it's switches or a server, but I just want to give you a heads up and that if in the next month or two, you might see me come and appropriate somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 to do this, to do this hardware update for us to run. So chances are you're going to use this server for the next three years plus another two years after that. So, you know, four or five years, you can't let it lump along. So we're going to do everything we can to get it up to moving. Just want to give you a little update on that. So if you, just let you know that in the future, you'll see me back over it.
Do you have the date of the joint committing, the joint meeting between the three localities for 911? I don't have that right in front of me.
Monday, yeah. Oh, the 20th, yeah, yeah. 28.
I just want to remind everybody that's going to be a very important meeting because the equipment for our emergency service is getting very old and an upgrade needs to be done sometime in the near future. So I hope all of you can attend that and will be a meal involved. Mr. County Attorney, did you want to talk about zoning at this point?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Chairman.
Elaborate a little bit.
I prepared a little PowerPoint and I apologize in advance if this is a little dry and doesn't actually get to the end result immediately where everyone, I think, the concerns that have been raised tonight. But if we're going to consider going down the path of zoning, I think we need an overview of what that, what it means to have zoning. And so that's, we'll begin at the beginning and move forward with our discussion. What is zoning? It's legislation locally adopted to govern the use of land based on the existing and planned uses in different areas of a locality. It's based on the recognition that what's appropriate in an industrial area might not be appropriate in a residential area or what might be welcome in a commercial or retail area might be incompatible with agriculture, for example. The two main themes in zoning are, on the one hand, what gives the government the right to tell me what I can and cannot do with my property? And on the other hand, it's not in my backyard. It's that, that's the discourse that you hear back and forth. Don't tell me, don't regulate my land versus don't let them put something next to my land that's going to hurt my property or my way of life. Both of these themes originated in 17th century political theory, based on those two competing thoughts and heavily influenced our founding fathers. On the one hand, you have the Hobbesian view that believe that people are nasty, brutish, and greedy and that citizens should demand order from the government and be willing to see, to give up some freedom in order to obtain order. On the other hand, there's John Locke, great defender of the rights of the individual, wrote the English Bill of Rights, believed that the government is only legitimate if it receives the consent of the governed through a social contract. So on the one hand, you have the need for order and the exercise of police power. On the other hand, you have the desire for individual freedom. That's what, that's what you have to consider. That's what you are continually balancing when you adopt and amend zoning. It is based on the police power under the theory that you could use your property in such a way that others are not harmed. That's the actual motto of Carroll County. That's the, literally the Latin translation, use your property such that others are not It's based on the police power, as I said. It establishes zones through the adoption of a map of a locality along with text descriptions, setting forth what's permitted in each one of those zones. It's based on the comprehensive plan and this is fundamental. This is key. We've got to have an updated and workable comprehensive plan because all zoning, the validity of your zoning organs will go back to its relationship to the comprehensive plan in terms of location of public, public infrastructure, identification of growth areas, identification of protected areas where we want to protect agriculture or other things, and the overall vision of how growth should proceed in the future. Historically speaking, zoning is, it's based on the, on the same concept of nuisance law. It's the government protecting the health, safety, and welfare of citizens by limiting certain uses in certain areas. Again, recognizing that what might be perfectly appropriate in a highly industrialized commercial area might be wildly inappropriate in a high-density residential area. The idea of zoning and regulation of land use goes back all the way to our colonial history. If you look back, there were ordinances banning slaughterhouses, gunpowder mills, and other offensive uses, even way back in Jamestown and Williamsburg had the maximum setbacks for the location of the powder magazine for obvious reasons. Later on in our history, we had setbacks, fire protection zones, things of that nature where wooden structures need to be set back a certain amount from each other, from other wooden structures, so that there's a decreased risk of fire in one house spreading to the next house, then to the next house, and to the next house. So it's, this is an exercise of the police power, limiting what people can do with their land within reason for the protection of not only that land, but the, the community as a whole. Zoning has been approved time and time again by Virginia Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court, provided that it's not discriminatory and doesn't operate as a taking, which deprives an owner of all economically useful use of his or her property. Zoning in Virginia is a little complicated because we are not a home rule state. In a home rule state, zoning would be opened up to anything that is not specifically prohibited by the state, a locality could, could regulate. That's not the way it operates in Virginia. We are a Dillon Rule state, which means that all of our ordinances, whether they're zoning or ordinances of any other nature, are going to be strictly construed and they're only going to be found valid if they are based on a specific grant of power from the General Assembly. Either a specific grant or necessarily or fairly implied from a specific grant or essential and indispensable to an enumerated power that's already been given. So we have a more narrow scope of what can be regulated. And if that, if the Dillon Rule is violated, go beyond the scope of what is specifically permitted by the enabling legislation, the action of the local... permitted by the enabling legislation, the action of the locality would be void. And if there's any doubt, courts will construe it against the public body. So if there's a, in layman's terms, if there's a tie, the locality would lose, in terms of whether there's a specific authority for the regulation. As I mentioned before, zoning can't go so far as to operate as a taking, that would be the regulation to such extent that it deprives an owner of the reasonable use of the property without just compensation. Generally, takings are found when a regulation deprives a landowner of all beneficial use of the property, economically beneficial use of the property. This is why we must, we must be careful when adopting a zoning ordinance, to make sure that it is done right, and we're not depriving anyone of viable use of the property. So why would Carroll County be interested in adopting zoning? Well, there are a number of reasons. The best place to look, I would submit, is in your comp plan. This is a quote taken directly from the comp plan. "As agriculture has been, has become more sophisticated and technological, the intensity of agricultural operations places it on par with industrial land uses. Except for the most genteel of farming operations, agriculture is a more intense use of land than residential. As residential subdivisions are introduced into agricultural areas, conflicts between the land uses arise. The collective voice of new residents building into an area may be louder than that of the working farmer. Agricultural operations are being squeezed out by the conflicts brought on by these incompatible land uses, coupled with a higher per acre price for land zoned residential." So that is one, one basis you might consider for why zoning might be appropriate in Carroll County, to protect encroachment of residential uses into agricultural areas, and sort of crowding out the agricultural use. And so that's already something that's been considered in Carroll County, that's been raised as a concern, is the conflict between agricultural and residential uses. As I said, zoning is intended to recognize that what might be appropriate and beneficial in one area might not be, might actually be harmful in another area. And zoning would be a tool to help address that issue. Another quote from the comp plan. "The plan will direct growth into compact and sustainable development patterns within areas already served with infrastructure, or in areas where infrastructure provision is planned and included in a capital improvement plan. It will set forth the policies to guide infrastructure provision and funding to ensure the county's fiscal sustainability." That's directly from the comp plan, page nine. "Zoning is one tool to accomplish that goal by creating zoning districts in areas where you already have existing water, existing sewer, roads, availability for other infrastructure." That is one way to maximize the use of the investments that you've already made in capital infrastructure, and to reduce the pressure that comes with growth in areas that aren't served by that, because inevitably, when you have a lot of residential growth, for example, in an area where there might not be sufficient roads, sufficient water, sufficient sewer, eventually, there's going to be a public request for that to be provided. Zoning is one way to funnel those residential uses in areas where you've already made those Why consider zoning? Well, the comp plan says that successful communities do not just happen, they must be continually shaped and guided. A community must actively manage its growth and respond to changing circumstances if it is to continue to meet the needs of its residents and maintain the quality of life that initially attracted these residents to the community. This is, zoning would be one way to plan for the future. Again, comp plan, page 10. This is something that you can see echoed again and again in the existing comp plan, is that there's a concern about the impact of new growth. "As residents have experienced increased traffic congestion, commercial encroachment on neighborhoods, and the inappropriate development of agricultural and natural open areas." So you've got, you've got some things that you can latch on to right there, as legitimate concerns for why zoning may be appropriate. These are things that you've already been working on, been planning on, at least going back to, I think, 2010, when the, when the comp plan, comp plan was last rewritten. "Effective growth management can help the county to address each of these concerns. Again, by shifting urban and suburban service demands to areas that lack adequate services and facilities, growth threatens to create detrimental fiscal impacts in addition to its impacts on the character of already developed neighborhoods, communities, and rural areas." Again, "The comp plan seeks to promote development and economic growth in areas that can be effectively and efficiently served by public facilities and utilities." I found this an interesting quote in the comp plan, page 44. "While its value is clear, the sustainability of agricultural agriculture in Carroll County is not guaranteed. One of the biggest threats to agricultural operations is the subdivision and development of land in rural areas. Development can fragment agricultural lands, reducing the long-term viability of agriculture. Conflicts between non-agricultural, agricultural development and agricultural uses are detrimental to everyone involved." And that is one of the classic scenarios that has led to the adoption of zoning in other localities. Again, the theory would be not to, not about taking away people's rights, but about protecting existing investments, farm investments, other investments that have already been made in public health and safety, and protecting those investments, and protecting existing Why would you consider zoning? Well, you've got a lot of good policy statements in the comprehensive plan, but it is not a binding enforceable document, it is a plan for growth. It is not an ordinance, it is not a basis for enforcement action. It is the planning document that would support then, future enforcement actions such as adoption of a zoning ordinance, but the comp plan in and of itself is not binding. It's important to always, to continually review and update your comprehensive plan. You must follow statutory criteria, it must be based, in reality, based on reasonable planning assumptions, you must treat similar areas similarly, it must be amended judiciously, and be part of an overall coherent policy. That includes the capital improvement plan, the official map, and if zoning is adopted, the zoning ordinance. As I said, comprehensive plan is not legally binding, it's merely a general guide. It is to designate the approximate location, character, and extent of each feature. It must indicate where existing lands or facilities are to be extended, widened, removed, relocated, vacated, narrowed, abandoned, or changed in use. The comprehensive plan shall control the general and approximate location of each feature shown on the plan, but it is, again, not, not binding. Matters to be considered in drawing and applying zoning ordinance, you've got to consider existing uses. What do we have, and where do we have it? What is the character of the property? What does our comprehensive plan say? What is the suitability of various properties for various uses? Do we have agriculturally rich soils in some areas that need to be protected? Do we have areas in other parts of the county that are suitable for intensive development, for industrial uses, for residential uses? What are the trends in growth? Where are we seeing development? What do we see looking forward? Are there present and future requirements for the community? And what are our transportation requirements? Additionally, in preparing the zoning ordinance, it's appropriate to consider where are our current public schools, where are planned public schools, where are we considering that growth in the future? As I mentioned, do we have areas, natural resources, valuable soils that should be protected? Where are our floodplains located? And where are our other valuable uses? To have a defensible zoning ordinance, it must be consistent with the comp plan. It must have a factual underpinning. It's got to be based on, on reality. What are, what are we using for, what are we expecting down the pipe? Cannot be purely aesthetic, it can't be preempted by other law, there are plenty of provisions of the Code of Virginia that put guardrails on the zoning power. It cannot be an illegal downzoning. You can't pick out one property and downzone, downzone that. It can't illegally take property. It must be uniform for each class of buildings and uses. Basically, you've got to treat like properties fairly, similar, it must be treated similarly and fairly. You cannot irrationally discriminate between similar properties. That doesn't mean you can't have appropriate line drawing, I mean, the locality has to draw a line somewhere between where to designate a growth area and a preservation area, for instance. And as long as you're drawing those boundaries with a rational basis, that action will be upheld. But it must be based in some sort of reality, and some good faith, motive, planning, and motivation. It can't be illegal spot zoning, and when you provide grandfathered status to certain properties, it must be based on rational considerations. Zoning ordinances, defensible zoning ordinances are geared toward the protection, protection of adequate light, air, and convenience of access, safety from fire, flood, crime, and other dangers, geared to reduce or prevent congestion of public streets, geared to facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community, geared towards adequate police and fire protection. Where are our current assets? Where do we have fire protection facilities? Where do we have our law enforcement facilities? Where do we have parks and schools? Those are things to consider and protect in the process of preparing a zoning ordinance. And protect against obstruction of or encroachment upon valuable historic assets or natural Must be geared toward protection against overcrowding of land, undue density of population relative to community facilities, prevention of obstruction of light and air, prevention of danger and congestion in travel, protection against harm to life or property from fire, flood, panic, or other dangers. A defensible zoning ordinance will be geared toward the protect, or encouragement of economic development, and as I said, preservation of valuable agricultural and forest lands and the natural environment. Those are all valid reasons to adopt a zoning ordinance, and to fix the different zones Also, a defensible zoning ordinance can consider protection of slopes of airports and approaches, and preventing encroachment on a military basis, promote creation and preservation of affordable housing, and geared towards the protection of surface and groundwater. As part of the zoning process, the locality can include a special use permit process that would permit development that would otherwise not be allowed in a particular zone, if suitable regulations and safeguards are put into place. The zoning, the zoning ordinance itself would establish which uses require a special use permit, and then the conditions could be imposed on the board, by the Board of Supervisors as part of the special use permit application process. And that is an area where the board could revoke a special use permit for lack of compliance with the terms and conditions of the, the permit, upon notice in a public hearing. Conditions that are often imposed by a locality under special use permits must relate to the impact of the, the impact or the anticipated impact of the proposed use, and it must be proportionate to the harm that you're trying to address. So things like hours of operation, lighting and noise regulations, buffering, ingress or egress, density restrictions, those are all things that have been defensively included in special use permits. You could also adopt standalone special regulations for particular uses, for example, and that would be outside of the special use permit process, for example, like requiring fencing around a junkyard. The, the Code of Virginia does permit for conditional zoning in certain areas, I think that's a little more advanced than maybe for our discussions tonight, so I might just move past those, the proffers portion. Limits on the local zoning power. Zoning ordinances may not impair vested rights. A vested right is one that belongs so completely indefinitely to a person that it cannot be taken away from him without his permission. Rights are deemed vested under statutory law when a property owner, one, obtains or is the beneficiary of a significant affirmative governmental act, which remains in effect, allowing development of a specific project, and then, two, relies in good faith on that affirmative governmental act, incurs extensive obligations or substantial expenses in diligent pursuit of that specific project, again, in reliance on the governmental action. And what does a affirmative governmental action mean? Well, it depends on the circumstances, but examples are when the locality accepts proffers, when the locality approves an application for a rezoning for a specific use or a specific density, or when a special exception or special use permit is granted with conditions. Approval of a variance by the Board of Zoning Appeals would be another situation where a landowner would receive an affirmative governmental action. Approval of a preliminary subdivision plot, again, that's, in most contexts, could be deemed a affirmative governmental act that would lead towards a vested rights determination. And if the property owner is indeed vested, that's when no change to the zoning ordinance or the regulations can overcome his right or her right to that particular use or development of the property in accordance with that vested right. As a part of that, vested rights, a subset of vested rights are what's called non-conforming use status. And those are uses that are in existence at the time of the adoption of a zoning ordinance, or that were in existence at the time of a change in the regulations under a zoning Those pre-existing uses are allowed to continue. It's a similar concept to grandfathering, although grandfathering is when, usually when the Board of Supervisors puts in the stat, in the zoning ordinance that, we're changing the zoning ordinance classification for agricultural property, for example, but all pending applications for uses would be still approved under the old regulations. That's what, that's grandfathering. Non-conforming uses is really when a use is in place at the time, for our purposes, that a zoning ordinance is adopted. In order to qualify for a non-conforming use status, the use must have been in existence prior to the adoption or the change of the regulations in question. The buildings or structures must be maintained in their then-existing structural condition. Expansions, additions, and remodeling may lose non-conforming status and be subject to new regulations. But in general, maintenance of the use as it exists at the time of the But in general, maintenance of the use as it exists at the time of the, of the adoption of the zoning ordinance, maintenance would be permitted, but expansions or significant renovations might lose that nonconforming status. In order to enjoy nonconforming status, the use must not have been abandoned or discontinued for more than two years. A pause for longer than that period will lose nonconforming status. The only exception to the limitation on expanding or rebuilding a nonconforming use is if the buildings or structures are involuntarily damaged. So if lightning strikes a building, catches fire, and burns down, that nonconforming building could be rebuilt and still enjoy nonconforming status. So the process for adopting a zoning ordinance is very detailed, laid out in the Code of Virginia, but the planning commission of each locality may, and at the direction of the governing body, shall prepare a proposed zoning ordinance, including a map or maps showing the division of the territory into districts, and a text setting forth the regulations applying in each district. So at any time, the planning commission could take up the issue of zoning and prepare a proposed zoning ordinance and maps for the board to consider. Or if the board votes to direct the planning commission to prepare a zoning ordinance, then it's mandatory, it shall, it shall do so. And it's my recollection from the board's action at the last meeting, is that the planning commission has been directed to prepare a proposed zoning ordinance. And I believe the commission is in the process of taking those initial steps. The commission must hold at least one public hearing on a proposed ordinance, and at the completion of its work, the commission shall present the proposed ordinance to the governing No zoning ordinance shall be amended or reenacted unless the governing body has referred the proposed amendment or reenactment to the planning commission for its recommendations. It always has to start with the planning commission. Even if the board directs it, the planning commission makes the initial review and preparation of the ordinance. The only exception to that is if the planning commission fails to prepare and deliver a proposed zoning ordinance within 100 days. The governing body can designate a shorter time than 100 days, but it must hold a public hearing prior to doing so. Additionally, before the Board of Supervisors could approve and adopt a zoning ordinance, at least one public hearing must be held on the proposed zoning ordinance after notice and advertisement. Zoning ordinances must be enacted in the same manner as all other zoning ordinance, so you must follow the, the normal steps for adopting any ordinance, which would be to publish it twice in a newspaper of general circulation in a locality. But there are additional timing requirements for zoning ordinances. The planning commission and the Board of Supervisors could hold a joint public hearing on the zoning ordinance, and that could expedite the process. In that situation, both entities would advertise and hold a joint public hearing, at which time, if the planning commission votes to approve it, then the Board of Supervisors could, could then proceed with the, with the zoning ordinance. And again, once it's advertised, more lax regulations could be adopted for any zoning classification, but the regulations could not be tightened without re-advertising. That's kind of our default rule. That probably sounds familiar to you all. Two consecutive weekly notices must appear in a newspaper prior to a public hearing. The hearing must be held within six to 21 days following the second notice, and written notice to the owners of the parcels involved must be given. So that's mailings to each parcel that's affected by a change in zoning. You would have to establish a Board of Zoning Appeals to render decisions on applications for variances, and issue interpretations of the district map, and if the zoning ordinance provides, the Board of Zoning Appeal, Board of Zoning Appeals could grant special exceptions. Happy to address any questions? That's sort of my brief overview on the process.
That's a lot, a lot to take in.
A little bit like drinking from the fire hose on that, covering a lot in a, in a short amount of time. I would say that this is something that you would consider to affect a, you know, a significant portion of the county. Zoning is not something that you adopt on a, on a property-by-property fashion. It's designed to govern the overall use in a county, or in a, in a district, or other defined, significantly defined portion of it, with some rational relationship to, to the regulations that are being adopted.
Well, I appreciate the time you put in to putting that presentation together. I think the general consensus in Carroll County up to this point has been that zoning is kind of a no-no and hands-off kind of thing. But I think the fact that we're even discussing it shows that we are serious about you all's problem. And it may or may not solve it, but at least we're looking into that as, as an avenue that might make some changes. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Well, as far as, as legal strategy to address any one particular use of a property, I think that's, that's a question that should be addressed to the board, and I could consult with the board and advise them specifically. I don't think that's something I would want to give legal advice just to, generally at an open meeting.
Have a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for coming.